All right. Good evening, citizens and city councils. Good to see everybody here this evening. It's six o'clock, and so with that, I'll call the November seventh, two thousand twenty-three meeting of the city council of City of West Richland to order at six P. M. And before we get started, I'll ask Stephanie to read the hybrid meeting ground rules and then call the roll if you would. Stephanie?
All right. Thank you. Tonight's meeting will be held in person with a virtual meeting component. If you are participating virtually, please make sure the name shown at the bottom of your video view is the name you would like the mayor to use. You can change this by right clicking on your video view and selecting rename. Audience members present in the council chambers will be called upon first during public comment periods. Those participating remotely should virtually raise your hand if you wish to speak. To virtually raise your hand, click on participants and then click on raise hand. If you are participating by phone only, press asterisk nine to raise your hand. Please limit all comments to three minutes. Roll call Brent Gary.
Here.
Richard Bloom.
Here.
Fred Brink.
Here.
David Fettow.
Here.
May Hayes.
Here.
Kate Moran, present, John Smart.
Here.
Ben Stoker.
Here.
Thank you. And Councilmember Hayes, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance this evening?
Pledge of allegiance through the flag of the United States of America. A true republic, which stands one nation under our individual citizens, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Hayes. Appreciate that. Counsel, the agenda is before you this evening. Are there any changes to the agenda this evening? Seeing no one, no changes, may I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the agenda as presented. Second?
Motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, counsel. We don't have any presentations this evening, so that brings us to the consent agenda, which is general business. It's taken by one vote. On the consent agenda this evening, it's the approval of payment of the bills, a regular meeting, October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. Resolution seventy-three, twenty-three, a resolution to reschedule the public hearing for vacation double oh-two dash twenty-twenty-three for Aspired Homes Design LLC. Resolution seventy-four, twenty-three, uh, resolution to re- reschedule a public hearing for vacation is zero zero-three, twenty-twenty-three Newman. Uh, motion to accept the two thousand twenty-three street striping project as complete. Motion to accept the progressive design bill contract for the police station is complete. Motion to authorize a purchase and sale agreement for lot five, short plat number thirty-seven forty-two, which is an acre. And if there's anyone from the audience who'd like to speak to our consent agenda this evening, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one here for the consent agenda, do I see anyone? I don't see anyone. Uh, let's see, if we're gonna go virtually, if you'd like to speak to the consent agenda this evening, raise your virtual hand or star nine if you're by phone. And Stephanie, I don't see anybody virtually. Do you?
I do not.
Being done, counsel, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda this evening?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, counsel. This brings us to our first citizen public comment this evening. This is the first opportunity citizens will have the comment, comment for any items that are not on the agenda this evening. Who would wish to provide any comments for items that are not on the agenda, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to address counsel, and then we'll move on to anybody that may be virtual. Anything that is not related to the agenda this evening, citizens' comments? I see no one here in house, and then it's either star nine or raise your virtual hand for online. And again, Stephanie, I do not see anybody virtually. Do you?
I do not.
And we'll go ahead and move on to eight ordinances, resolutions, motions, and public hearings. Item eight A is a public hearing regarding the proposal municipal code text amendment that would change the code to allow cannabis retail sales in light industrial zones. And I'll ask Community Development Director Eric Minnethal to present his staff report this evening. Eric?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before you, before I begin, I'd like to make you aware that the public comments which came in after the publication of the council packet have been emailed to you this afternoon, um, and that all public comments that received prior to five P. M. Today have been provided to you. Um, I have also provided you my responses to council members' emails that were sent yesterday and today in a printed packet there at your, at your dais seat. Um, public comments that came in after the publication include comments from Dean and Cindy Reince, Connor, David, Jared, and Jennifer Dobson. Dan Ritchie had two emails, Jennifer Page, Julie and William Bishop, Lanay Smart, Robert and Christina Palmer, Robin and Steve Smet, and Pam Ritchie. And if you sent your comments in before the packet was published, it's included in the overall packet, and you can find it there. Uh, members of the council tonight, I'll be reviewing the background on how we got here and some history to the request. Uh, then I will review what is being proposed. I will share why annexing the existing shop isn't recommended. I will also review, um, some police data that was shared with the planning commission, and I'll share details on tax revenues, and finally, I'll present the timeline, uh, in process. So last year, K and B Weaver LLC, who holds the state license to sell cannabis in West Richland, submitted an application to consider a zone zoning code text amendment that allows cannabis sales in the commercial general, commercial limited, and light industrial zoning districts. Staff included a question in the first citywide online survey, which indicated that forty-eight percent supported the idea to allow cannabis sales, with thirty-four percent opposed, and eighteen percent were neutral. Following the results, the planning commission discussed the proposal at their July thirteenth meeting. Staff changed the proposal and removed the inclusion in the commercial general and commercial limited zoning districts and kept the proposed use to be allowed in the light industrial zone. The planning commission held the first public hearing on April seventeenth. There was a significant public, uh, comment provided at the meeting, all of which both emails and meeting minutes are included in the staff report. At the September fourteenth Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission voted three to one, recommending counsel approve the proposed text amendment. As previously stated, all public comments received prior to five P. M. Today have been provided to the city council. The draft ordinance proposed to change the current regulations that prohibit cannabis sales in all zones to allow the sales of cannabis in the light industrial zone. While drafting the language, staff took into consideration recent state law passed, which could allow for additional licensing and added language, which limits the number of retail cannabis stores to one. Recently, Pasco passed an ordinance that allows up to three stores in their city. There's also state law that is integrated into the proposed code that creates a thousand-foot buffer from sensitive uses, which include schools, parks, libraries, recreation centers, childcare centers, public transit centers, and game arcades. Here you can see the three industrial zones. Um, let me get my pointer out here. And if everybody wants to look behind them on the bigger map, there's industrial zone here, industrial zone here, and there's an industrial zone here, and I'll zoom into the, the two that don't have the big buffers. This one is excluded. All the industrial districts next, uh, the light industrial district next to Gross Cup, uh, is being disqualified because it has a park next to it. The other two locations are not disqualified as none of the listed features are within a thousand feet of those districts. So in this picture, this is the one that's off of Kennedy. And it's, yeah, it's that part, that zone here. To give you some point of reference, um, let's see, this is Watkins. This is Kennedy, and then this is bombing range in Keene. So that's where the trust, the trust plant is, and the rad towing is right there. Boy, I shake a lot, don't I? Okay. Here's the other industrial district. Um, this is zoomed in perspective. Um, this one's a little bit more difficult to see, but the lighter is the light industrial, the darker is a different zone. That's commercial light industrial. So it would be this area here. And again, the other area that's own industrial that's off of two-two-four and, uh, Gross Cup would be prohibited because of its proximity to a park. During the planning commission meeting, Commissioner Aldrich asked if we could annex the existing shop that's in our urban growth area. There's a high potential of liability if the city were to annex this property, as it would jeopardize the existing license, and the city attorney recommends not taking action to annex that property at this point in time. During the planning commission meeting, again, Commissioner Aldrich asked for details on the potential revenue for this use. So I reached out to Aaron Gwen, our finance director, who pulled data from state reports from local jurisdictions that reported revenue for state shared excise tax based on population, which looked at Aberdeen, who has a very similar population count at seventeen thousand forty in the year twenty-twenty-two, and they reported fi- uh, fifty-eight thousand dollar and fifty-seven dollars, uh, reported revenue from the state shared tax, state shared excise tax for cannabis. West Richland has a population and two, or had a population of seventeen thousand four hundred and ten in twenty-twenty-two. So we used sixty thousand dollars as an estimate. The applicant provided data that indicates projected shared rev- or the projected revenue between eight to eleven million dollars a year for their store. And the city receives eighty-four cents for every hundred dollars in sales, therefore, running the math would estimate revenues from sixty-seven thousand to a hundred and one thousand dollars annually. Again, these numbers were reviewed and scrutinized by the finance team, and they are estimates. The planning commission also requested for calls for service to the Nirvana store, uh, police calls. Well, staff obtained the call data from the Benton County Sheriff's Office, and you'll see they had twenty-two calls with four of those being assisted by West Richland PD. However, I asked the question, is there, is twenty-two a lot of calls for service for the establishment? Therefore, I pulled comparison of a local grocery store and convenience store because they sell liquor, which have similar impacts. Local grocery store had a hundred and forty calls for service, and you can see the different types of calls that are listed there. The local convenience store had a hundred and fourteen calls for service, and you can see the different types of calls there. I was asked by Councilman Stoker about traffic counts for these facilities. I don't have the exact numbers, but I did go out and do some counting, um, in comparisons, and I counted cars at the parking lot at the grocery store, and I went and visited the Nirvana shop and, and chatted with them. Uh, there were seventy-five cars at the grocery store, which included twenty-five employees and an unknown number of share, uh, ride-share cars that were parked there that they carpool. Um, the Nirvana store had seventeen cars, and they had six employees at the time I visited. I will point out that these numbers are limited in representation, as they are just a snapshot in time. Um, they're now, the Nirvana store did say that they have about five to six hundred, uh, visitors per weekday day and over a thousand per day on the weekend. You show what happened and why, what is still remaining, um, is that the planning commission held a workshop, uh, to discuss the text amendment on July thirteenth. They then held a public hearing on August seventeenth and heard public comment. They then held a meeting on September fourteenth and voted to recommend approval to counsel. Tonight, counsel is currently holding a public, their second public hearing, and will soon hear public comment on the proposal. And it is proposed that counsel will further discuss the, uh, the text amendment and likely take action at their next meeting on November twenty-first. As a reminder, there will be no action taken on this topic tonight.
All right. Thank you, Eric. Appreciate that. And, uh, before I open the public here, I want to go over a couple of ground rules, if I could, please. Uh, I just wanted to emphasize that during public hearings, uh, I would appreciate if we, we don't have any, any clapping or heckling or comments and things of that nature. I, I'd encourage everybody to be, to be respectful and professional as, as you speak here this evening, as our counsel will also do the same. There will also be a three-minute timer that Stephanie will be, be working over there. If you hear, uh, the, the end of your three minutes, please wrap up quickly, so I don't have to do the bad thing and, and, and turn the microphone off on you. But everybody's got an opportunity to speak, and we're very glad to have all of you here this evening. So with that, I will open the public hearing at six sixteen. Uh, we'll hear in-person comments first and then the virtual attendees. Uh, so if you would like to address this item on the agenda this evening, please come to this podium, state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes to provide your comments. So whomever might want to be the first one this evening? We don't have a raffle or anything like that going on where, you know, you take a number and we draw it at the end.
Good evening. Um, first of all, bear with me. I don't, not a good public speaker, but this, this matter is important to me. That's why I'm here. So, um, my name is Rob Palmer. I live at thirty-six hundred South Highlands Boulevard in West Richland. I'm here tonight to speak against allowing the marijuana sales in our city. Um, I've been a resident and a business owner here in West Richland for twenty-plus years now. Um, we chose this community to raise our family for the small-town family-friendly characteristics it offers. Um, I feel this type of business doesn't offer that. Um, and I think we can do better. I'd like to know personally why the city has dedicated so much staff time to the issue since it's such a divisive issue for the community, and it was not listed as a priority, uh, by the community in the survey that our staff keeps referring to, and it's online. I don't see it anywhere in that survey. If, if we're to believe the results of this survey, the response rate, which is debatable as being statistically valid, uh, but for the sake of discussion, that survey also states that the citizens love that West Richland feels safe, secure, and peaceful. They like the small-town feel. Citizens rated the following as high priorities for the council to consider to work on. Managing growth and density of the city, fair cost of living, and attract new restaurant businesses. Nowhere does it mention that pot shops are a priority, and our time should be dedicated to that. Um, there's a long list of priorities from the community indicated in both the key findings and anything more to say sections on the online survey, um, which time doesn't prohibit, I mean, doesn't allow to go into here in detail, none of which though state that staff time should be spent working on a way to allow pot shops in our city. It's not a priority. All of these priority areas that were mentioned will take time and resources to resolve, and that's where we, we as a public said we want our resources spent. I have emailed a lot more detailed information to each of you. Um, to me, the whole thing sounds like something, I'm assuming, since we have a strong mayor, and the mayor wants this and has directed staff to prioritize it in complete contradiction to the wishes of the citizens, apparently. I, for one, do not think we should resort to drug dealers as a revenue source for our city. I think we can do better. Um, so I, I urge you to listen to the many, many people who have participated in these public hearings and or commented and have provided you with substantial opposition to this amendment and vote no. Thank you for your time.
One other addition, I'll remind everybody that we do not, uh, have interaction conversations back and forth between counsel and or the speaker. You're, you, you just reminded me that I left one note out in my comments to begin with, so thank you. Uh, next, please.
Rob Anderson, twenty-fourteen Hawk Court. I recently took the opportunity to read through the City of West Richland's comprehensive plan, which is a blueprint through twenty-three-seven, which is supposed to be direction of city leaders. I'd like to read some points from that plan that I think are pertinent. The desire is to retain its welcoming neighboring character while achieving the economic growth needed to maintain a high quality of life for its growing populace. The goal is for a flourishing community where residents at all stages of life are proud to live, work, and play. West Richland is known for a high proportion of young active families. With over thirty percent of the total population eighteen-nine, age nineteen and under, West Richland is celebrated for a small-town feel and sense of safety and security with broad open spaces. One of the housing goals for the community is prevent neighborhood degradation and promote community safety. Media outlets and online information sources regularly recognize the city for being a best place to raise a family. New residents commonly mention the family-friendly community as being a strong draw to the area. Economically, the plan states promote the city's family-focused environment as an attractive feature for prospective businesses, coordinate retail strategies oriented toward regional tourism activities for market synergy, promote West Richland's image and identity for purposes of attracting and growing business, tourism, and local spending, and encourages the development of restaurants to support surrounding industrial uses. Have a strategy that attracts and supports local economic growth while enhancing, maintaining, and protecting the integrity of the community and residential neighborhoods. And we know that West Richland is not a big commercial city compared to the other cities in the tri-cities. If you allow placing a pot shop within the city boundaries, I believe that the marijuana business is what the city is going to be identified for. Marijuana is what people will come to West Richland for. There's not much redeeming value for a pot shop other than to add potential hundred and sixty thousand dollars of the city coppers. The hundred and sixty thousand dollars won't account for the cost impacts to individual families who have to deal with addictions and health concerns. It won't account for the negative impact it may have on the city's reputation as a wholesome community for raising families, and it won't account for the negative impact it may have on promoting other business. I would encourage our efforts to be focused in finding quality sit-down restaurants, as it was a high on citizens' mind during the most recent survey. If it makes sense, I'd be glad to volunteer some of my time working with a group of individuals to attract quality businesses and promote and encourage volunteer projects and initiatives so we can come up with a hundred and sixty thousand dollars by some other wholesome means and keep the reputation of our community as one we can all be proud of and is more in line with our comprehensive plan. I recommend that you vote no.
Next?
I'm Lanay Smart, four hundred South Fifty-fourth, West Richland. Um, people come to West Richland to be in a more rural-like community. West Richland only needs wholesome, family-friendly, and small-town-like businesses. If you allow just one store to be established, then it sets, sets the foundation, opens the door for more. Just because the state allows you to have one or more does not mean you have to, or nor should you. It has been stated that there has been a low amount of calls for police help at the current pot shop on Arena Road. However, it has not taken into account the calls from the nearby residents about the suspicious activities that have occurred in their neighborhoods since the establishment of the Arena Road Pot Shop. Your mission statement and vision statements state family values, a safe and inviting community, and a healthy community. By allowing a pot shop, you are going against your visions, our vision statement and mission statement. Be an example and stand up for a healthy, safe, and wholesome community. I have learned that this same, the same issue was brought up at a city council meeting in two thousand and fifteen, and that there was and still is a large percentage of West Richland residents against having a pot shop. When will you listen to the residents? It seems to me that money is the only focus and force. We do not need this type of revenue, which only aids to the degradation of society. I strongly urge you to not go with a recommendation of the planning commission, rather to listen to the residents and the truth that has been stated throughout all the meetings by the public. Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, Cody Lewis. I live five eight zero three Glenbrook Loop in West Richland. First, let me say I appreciate the opportunity to stand here and give my opinion on this important topic. The decision ahead of this group is a big responsibility, and I hope you're not taking it lightly. So thank you for serving, and hopefully we can make this decision together as a community. I'm here to encourage the council to make an educated decision with good information and sound facts. There's three topics I would encourage you to do your own research on. I believe this decision will be Pandora's box, and it will be impossible to close once it's opened. First, the, is this what the community wants? I don't believe that you have a clear picture of what the community wants. The survey had six hundred and sixty-two participants. That's a four, less than four percent response rate, and it's not enough information to warrant a data-driven decision. Many believe anything under twenty percent response rate is statistically invalid. That's hard to say. I would encourage you to either put this decision out to a vote or do a better survey, but do not rely on the one you have, please. I would support the results of the, of, of the representation of our community opinion, regardless of the outcome, as should you. The second is the tax revenue. Um, make sure you have real numbers on what the city's going to receive versus what the state's going to receive. I can tell you, I've done a little bit of research on this, and that number is not worth selling our community out. The issues that will result from this will outweigh the small tax revenue we're going to get. Third is the crime and the incidents of our public safety officers and our residents that's going to have to deal with. The comparison of an existing pot shop to a grocery store is not logical. The fact that Yoke sells alcohol does not mean that it's a comparator. The level of traffic in and out of a grocery store alone makes this a bad comparison. Why wouldn't we use the mall as a comparison? How I suggest you compares to get a real picture is to compare the pre-shop pot incidents to the post-pot shop incidents in that same area. That's going to give you a true sense of what's happening. I would also encourage you to talk to the people that live in that neighborhood. They've had windows broken, people arrested in their yards. These things didn't happen before the pot shop. Personally, I've seen two occasions that there have been cars doing donuts in the parking lot. The second time gravel was actually coming out of the parking lot and hitting Kennedy. I've never seen that at Yoke's. So to wrap up, I'd like to personally look, I'd like for you to personally look at these three items before making this decision. Don't sell out our community for a few bucks. I can tell you that I'll be watching how you vote so that I can determine how I will vote. I'd encourage everyone in the room to do the same. Thank you.
Next this evening? It might be the winning number here.
Yeah. Excuse me. My name is Robin Brown. I live at thirty-eight twenty-one Mountain Meadow Court. Across the street from the current pot shop. We live one house back from Kennedy Road. We're not on Kennedy Road. But the light pollution from the pot shop, the car noise from the pot shop that extends till they close up until, what is eleven o'clock at night, something of that nature, is something we, we've lived there now for twenty-five years, and the last five or so, or so, I think that's been there. The noise is stuff we've never had to deal with in the twenty years previous. And, I mean, we realize there's increased road noise, but the vehicles, it's like he's talked about the donuts and all that. That kind of stuff goes on not every day of the week, but frequently, and especially late at night. And, um, we have personally had the police in our backyard looking for individuals at two, three o'clock in the morning. Um, concerned they were getting in our shop or jumping the fence. They had tracked them down around. Those things didn't happen the twenty years before. We've never had the police in our neighborhood, and we've had car windows broken out in the neighborhood in the last couple, three years. So it is something that and I'm concerned that we all spoke, a lot of us spoke to the planning commission. But I don't see any recognition that the majority of us, all but one person, the owner of the fellow who wants to come here. Are against this in our in our city. We we don't want those kinds of things in the city. We'd rather have family friendly, welcoming things, nice restaurants, parks, all those things that we have now. Please don't put a pot shop in our city. Thank you.
Next this evening.
I'm Mark Killinger, forty two sixty Laurel Drive, where we've lived for over thirty years. I strongly oppose allowing cannabis sales in West Richland. The city promotes itself as a wholesome, family friendly community, which is a key attraction to many who live and want to live here. Cannabis sales flies in the face of this identity. While tax revenues may appear to be attractive, deeper consideration indicates many negative consequences of pot sales. These include social consequences that also have negative financial impacts. I ask you to oppose cannabis sales and keep West Richland the attractive community it is today. Don't put much stock in the city survey. I never saw a notice for this, and I read the city newsletters in our utility bills and in the REA magazine, and I'm on the parks board. Other residents have told me the same, so we didn't take the survey. The expressed opposition to pot shops here is overwhelming in verbal and written comments. I encourage you to take a cue from the Richland City Council, who recently listened to their constituents and changed their plan for Leslie Grove's Park. Please vote no.
Next this evening.
My name is David Cole, and I live at seventeen ten Ironwood Avenue. The planning commission's recent action on this issue was disheartening, considering the decision ignored substantial citizen input opposing it. The city has a credibility problem. Many of the residents with whom I've spoken simply don't trust city government. They say the city doesn't listen to their concerns, the city lacks transparency, and they feel the city does what it wants despite citizen input. Now, whether that's actually true or only perception is irrelevant, because actions like this only underscore that perception. The citizens' perception is the city's business reality. The city's recent Facebook survey on the issue was not properly administered. The survey received only six hundred and sixty two responses, and this is not a large enough sample of our nearly eighteen thousand population to move forward with a decision of this magnitude. As a candidate for local office, I have doorballed about three thousand homes in this town. In all of those conversations with residents, only fourteen have voiced their support for this proposal. Now, while neither mine nor the city's surveys could be considered scientific, I'm very confident my in person feedback from citizens is much more reliable. The city's vision statement says West Richland is a growing city where family values and community responsiveness are important. The city should grow in a balanced way to produce produce a safe and inviting community, having good residential and recreational alternatives and a healthy economic base. That vision accurately reflects our community. Approving a business that sells us an addictive Schedule One controlled substance is in direct opposition to that vision. Marijuana is not a good recreational alternative, and it's questionable whether it can even contribute to a healthy economic base. I believe we can develop better revenue sources than taxes, roughly a hundred K is what they've said, from the sale of a Schedule One controlled substance, and we've already know that the collateral impacts are a net negative for the community. West Richland residents have been very clear in their overwhelming opposition to this in recent years and now. Yet we're here again considering the planning commission's recommendation. The citizenry is still telling you no. Citizens have presented facts and data to support their opposition, but the number one reason council should consider is the fact that this city's residents don't want it. Please respond appropriately to our input. It could be helpful in overcoming the previously mentioned perception problem. Thank you.
Next this evening.
Dan Ritchie, five oh eight Austin Drive. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm going to paraphrase a letter to the editor that I sent out in two thousand and fifteen. That was the last time we went through this fiasco of addressing this question. And in case you've not figured it out, I'm highly opposed to marijuana shops in West Richland. It's totally against what our vision statement says up there, and it against it. I mean, it's against what I believe in. In my letter to the editor, I stated that we had just finished looking at this as a West Richland City Council. And the council had now decided to revisit it so that we could gather more information and revisit the ban on marijuana related businesses. After that, three out of seven of the council members voted to rescind the ban on marijuana businesses in West Richland. Even though sixty seven percent of the West Richland residents voted against I five oh two. Ninety percent were against any marijuana related businesses in the city of West Richland, and yet three of seven voted for pot stores in West Richland. It is obvious that the residents were not the deciding factor in the decisions of those council members. Those council members just didn't seem to understand that the citizens are overwhelmingly against locating businesses such as pot shops, casinos, strip clubs around our homes and families regardless regardless of the state revenue being offered. Please listen to the residents. I want to just mention a couple other little things here while I got my dander up. Two thousand and fifteen, thirty five out of thirty thirty nine residents that spoke opposed. That's ninety percent. In two thousand and twenty three at the planning commission meeting, twenty two out of twenty three spoke in opposition. That's ninety six percent. That number's not going down. It's going up. The pseudo survey is very flawed. I'm a nuclear engineer by training and a mathematician. And to that end, I know what the statistical sampling is. That was not it. We talked a minute ago about being a citizen priority. This is not a citizen priority. Stopping this is a citizen priority. I also want to mention and be sure we all remember that we can't forget our social equity license. As soon as we take and let one in, now you're going to let in two or three. We listened to a gentleman at the planning commission meeting say, it's already in a plan. It's already in works. He's ready to go. Dollars back to West Richland. I mean, we've talked about some dollars up here a while ago, not that I believe any of them. And the reason I say that is you're not creating new revenue. This is not a standalone shop out in the middle of a field somewhere. This is a shop that will be, oh, let's see, what would that be about five minutes away from the other shop? So what you're going to do is you're going to take that number, and you're going to divide by two, and that's going to be the best you can hope for. And don't forget, you got your social equity license. Now divide by three or four. So what have we actually done here? What have we actually accomplished? Little to nothing. We already have one pot store. We don't need another. We do not need to be pot central. Thank you very much.
Next this evening.
Hi, my name's Aaron Parker. I live at fifty three oh one Blue Jay Lane. My wife and I moved here about two years ago. We were leaving an area. Amongst one of the reasons amongst the many reasons we left that area was marijuana. We have two young kids. One's four, one's two. We take our kids on walks. We go on bike rides. I'd go running in the morning, and every time I'd pass through marijuana. It drove me crazy, and we came specifically to West Richland, knowing that, like, has been stated. The vision is family values are important. I know that I've seen that. We came here for that reason. I grew up in another state. I grew up in a state that had marijuana usage far more frequently than the state of Washington. In high school, I had a lot of friends who smoked marijuana. They were able to obtain it before they should have been able to. A lot of friends on sports teams, a lot of friends on in classes. And I had a lot of friends that we drifted apart because of their use of marijuana. I had one in particular that marijuana led to Xanax, led to prescription pills, led to cocaine, led to meth. We drifted apart to the point where when I left for college, I didn't interact with him. When I came back a year later, I saw him at a restaurant. He was he was clean. And he saw me, and he jumped up, and he gave me a hug, and he said, Aaron, I'm finally clean. And he spent years addicted as a teenager because marijuana was the first substance that he tried. I I I'm speaking from a younger father's point of view. I have a four year old, a two year old. I don't want my kids going through that situation. I don't want my children to be exposed to the kind of things that I was trying to flee from. So I would voice my concern with everybody else behind me that has also said to prevent any kind of pot shop from coming in. Thank you.
Anyone else this evening? And okay.
Hi, I'm Chantey Debell. I live at five nine five two Juneberry Drive here in West Richland. I was not planning on speaking tonight, but I feel kind of moved to do so. So please excuse me if I don't sound very eloquent, but I moved here about fourteen years ago with my husband. At the time, we didn't have any kids. Now we have two boys. They're twelve and nine. And we're trying to raise them as good boys. You know, we're trying to teach them good values. We're trying to help them. They have so many pressures at school. They have so many. They're just trying to fit in. They're just trying to figure out who they are. They don't need these extra pressures of having kids at school that are doing these things and offering these things to them. It does affect our community in a huge way. I am a dental hygienist, and I meet my patients. I get to know a lot of different people. I have a patient that was a detective, a retired detective. And when we were trying to decide where to buy our home, he said West Richland is a fantastic place to live because we were looking in Pasco or Kennewick. And he told me the vast difference between the crime statistics and all the different things in the different cities, and a lot of policemen live in this area because this is safe. But it will not remain safe if we continue to encourage this kind of businesses in our community. This is not the kind of community that we want. We want a quality community. We don't care about the revenue that comes from it. There's better ways for that to come. And so I have a father and a brother that have been addicted or addicted to drugs. My father has since passed away because of his addictions, and it did lead to starting out with marijuana and cigarettes and those kind of things, and it did lead to meth eventually. And he died of a heart attack because it was just too hard on his body. So yes, these things do affect people. We need to find better ways to teach our community members to take care of their bodies and to be healthy. And it's not by putting a Band-Aid on it and taking drugs. I know that there are some medical things. Obviously, I'm not trying to be ignorant of that. But I do think that there are healthier ways we could teach our citizens to take care of their bodies so that we can have a healthy community. Wouldn't that be great if that would be our mission instead of, hey, let's bring pot shops to here? So I would definitely vote no for our community to have that here. Thank you for listening.
Next this evening.
The remarks I Janay Jepson, forty five oh four Desert Cove Court. The remarks I prepared are really short, but in listening, I want to interject that the one place I feel like hasn't been polled is the hospital. I was having a conversation with somebody that works at the emergency room at the hospital after the results of the planning commission, and they're like, what? They said so many cases are marijuana related, and and I I too believe that marijuana is the gateway drug. And when kids see that it's for sale and they think it's safe and it's not well regulated either. And it's not safe. They don't understand the levels of the harm that it that it can do to him. This has already been said, but I think it's maybe good to remind you at the close. The mission of the city of West Richland is in partnership with our citizens and public and private entities is to provide a safe, healthy, and welcoming city where people choose to live and raise a family. It's not necessary to read any further. If you stand behind your mission to provide a safe, healthy, and welcoming place where people want to raise their families, then the debate's over. A pot shop fails the test of all four points, and it shouldn't even be a consideration. I invite you to vote no. Thank you.
Who else this evening?
Greg Nelson, twenty three eighteen South Highlands Boulevard. I won't take any more time repeating what's been said. I didn't have an opportunity to participate in the survey because I knew nothing about it. But I wanted to let you know that I would have voted strongly against. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Name's Kristen Christensen. I live at six zero zero one Kilawayo Drive. I just wanted to stand with the other people that have come up here and say that I also strongly oppose putting in a cannabis shop. We already have one. We don't need another one. I'm a mom of five kids, five to fourteen years old, and I don't think they need those kind of influences around them at a thousand feet away. Miles away, they don't need it nearby. I I want to keep our community focused on family values as well. And thinking about bringing more revenue in, I think we can find other ways to do that. And I just feel like for how many commission or commission planning meetings have already been and city council meetings has already been on this, and the and the public has stood up and said that we don't want one. So much money and time has already been wasted on this topic that could have been going to something else that we could be using for our community that would be better. So we've spoken. We don't want it. I hope that you'll listen to what we have to say. Thank you.
Anyone else this evening? You can pretty stage up here in the front.
I'm Terry Davies. I live at thirty seven oh six South Lake Drive in West Richland. Been there for thirty years now. And I want to just sort of recognize those who've been speaking and thinking that some who are now raising younger children in the community are speaking up and speaking out against this and the concern about it, because we've raised our children here. And they've gone on to be productive citizens. We're proud of them. And also, I'm a mental health counselor, and I've seen sort of the cross the board effects of substance use with people all over our state. I think the city of Vancouver today declared a state of emergency because of homelessness and having difficulty with managing populations. I think there can be a high correlation to marijuana use and sales. We came to a park commission meeting a couple of weeks ago, and there was already concern about vagrancies in our parks and in our community, and I think bringing this into our community is just going to escalate that even more. So those are just some of the points that I wanted to bring out today and speaking very strongly against having cannabis sales in the city of West Richland. Thank you.
Next this evening.
My name is Patricia Dobson. I get nervous. I live at six ten South Fifty Fourth Avenue in West Richland. I've been coming and speaking and crying since two thousand and fifteen. And I've said, no, no, no. And I went to Olympia, and I said, no, no, no. I went to the commission. Planning commission said, no, no, no. And it falls on deaf ears. It frustrates me. I talk to people and ask them to come, and they say, why should we go? They won't listen. They'll do what they want anyway. That should frustrate you. I broke my toe like two weeks ago, and I was laying I broke my toe like two weeks ago and I was laying in the recliner and I heard a guy on the news say, we're not going to do that because our people said they don't want it and we're going to listen and vote for what our people want. You need to do that. You need to listen to us. I went to this lecture last week and it said that we need to reach out and try and be peacemakers and have unity. So I thought, well, maybe I should look at this from their point of view. So I got in my car and I drove from where my kids live right across the street from the Rena Drive. And I drove to the middle school where my grandkids go. It was one point two miles from that to the police department on Keen Road, which you're proposing, was two point eight miles. So it's not even three miles that a person's going to save to drive it. The other thing is by living school years ago, we voted that there was going to be a high school there. That was the proposed location of a new high school. Will they bring it here if there's drugs? Why shouldn't they? They don't allow them in Richland. But you allow it here when you already have one. This is a little bit different because that one is counting. This one will be that the our city's giving a license. We don't want that. We want what's good for families. We have family values here. We want you to listen. We want you to hear us. Please let us raise our families here the way we want. Give us a good community. Don't flush it down the toilet for a few bucks. Look at the future. You've heard how it affects. The money's going to go down the drain when you have to pay for more pleas and more problems. And it will affect the health of your children and it will affect the health of your people. Thank you.
My name is Lindsay Clark. I live um at sixty seventy Juneberry Drive. I also do not have prepared comments tonight because I was not aware that this was being discussed tonight, but I've been watching this issue very closely and doing lots of research on it. Um, aside from what I do professionally, so I'm a registered nurse. I bring a health perspective to this, I think, as well as the parent perspective because I have five children that attend the school district here and we live right here next to your beautiful community building. Um, I think it's um pretty preposterous and crazy that we're not listening to the the citizens. And if this gets voted yes, it's a blatant violation against what your community community members are asking and wanting for this community. Um, I have not met one friend or person who likes this idea of bringing a pot shop. It doesn't make any sense. There are other ways to bring in revenue. And we would like to hear your plans for what are the other options that you've been considering other than this pot shop? We have access to a pot shop here. I'd like to talk about uh dispensary density. Bringing another dispensary here is outrageous for our small town. We have one that's enough access for people who are interested in yeah, things other than THC like the CBD things, compounds and things, or you know, interested in the benefits to the endocannabinoid system. That's great. We have a dispensary here. But the NIH has done studies and just published one, I can send it to you, that the number of marijuana hospitalizations and abuse goes up with the number of dispensaries. So the dispensary um density. So if we get another dispensary here, if we get two more, we're going to get more hospitalizations. Children of, you know, are exposed to marijuana, whether we like it or not. Um, so if there's access, if there's dispensaries, they're going to have access and that's our, that should be our big concern as adults in this community is the protection of our children. Um, even Governor Inslee said when they started to approve um pot shops back ten years ago for Seattle. Uh, he said it was imperative for community members to keep marijuana away from our children. Um, I just wanted to share a little bit of what they are saying on their end from that. Uh, it said when voters approved the legalization and of marijuana in Washington, there were requirements tied in to pour tax money into campaigns to prevent its use. So um they also said they implore parents to intervene and talk to their children about the dangers of using marijuana. Um, ask, we're supposed to be in charge of preventing them from using it. They have a big, huge campaign called Start Talking Now to Your Children that shows a family driving by a dispensary in their car. And we're supposed to bring up a conversation with our children every time we drive by why marijuana is a bad idea. And, okay, so I need to wrap it up. Um, so I just want to, there's way more studies. I can send them all to you in email form. They know that the brain doesn't stop developing till twenty-five. We legalize this at twenty-one and we're we're hurting our children. Thank you.
Next this evening? Rock, paper, scissors, right?
That's how to do it. My name is David Anderson. I live at thirty-one sixty-five Hickory Avenue. And I also want to voice my opinion on this matter. As a younger citizen of the community, I've just gotten out of college. I'm working on a teaching master's degree to get a licensure and become a teacher. Um, I definitely don't want to see marijuana in schools. And I don't think a thousand feet is a good buffer zone. If there is a dispensary nearby, there will be people who will be getting it into the hands of children. And I would like you guys to vote no against this uh change in the wording because I don't think our community needs this kind of an influence on our families and and kids and even adults. Thank you.
Next this evening?
Hello, my name is Jennifer Dobson. I live at three eight two six Mountain Meadow Court. Uh, if you leave my house, the street faces the pot shop that is currently there. We have lived there since two thousand four. We have had a window broken out of our car in our driveway. We have had people run through our yard and ditch whatever items and then retrieve them the next day. They walked through my yard the next day at nine thirty in the morning looking for whatever it is that they hid in my backyard. They scaled the fence or the wall over to Keen. We have had police come out and help us with these issues. I have three kids that go to Richland High School. They're teenagers. If they could be here tonight, they're doing homework. They are strongly against this. They see it in the schools. They they see kids being suspended because they have access to drugs even though they're not supposed to. We don't want this in the community. Many of us have voiced that, so I ask you to vote no.
Anyone else this evening?
My name is Pam Anderson. I live at twenty-fourteen Hawk Court. We've lived here for over twenty-five years, raised four children here. We have loved the community. We voted no in twenty-fourteen to any kind of marijuana dispensary in the city of West Richland. I vote regularly and often, only once per election.
Thank you.
I'm probably the only citizen here that actually received the survey. I received the email. I received a reminder email, but I was caring for my aging parents in San Diego and I did not respond to it. So I'm a concerned citizen that did not respond and I apologize that I did not do that. I am also a citizen that has voted to tax myself for things. I voted to tax myself to support the library when it was going to be taken away from us by Mid-Columbia Libraries. I voted to tax myself to have access to ambulance service in West Richland. I am willing to support things that are good for our community. I don't feel that a cannabis shop so close to where our new high school might be or even the new housing that is going in is is an advantage to our community. We have lots of wineries that are here to have wine tours and upscale types of entertainment and travel for people. We need to have some other services in our area that support that. We don't want people coming to the raceway that they're so excited that it's opened again and have the pot shop right in the way and have accidents happening on our streets because of abuse. I've encouraged you to vote no for any kind of cannabis sales in the city of West Richland. Thank you.
Next this evening? All right, I'm going to ask, we have, okay.
Um, I'm in eighth grade at Enterprise. My name's Cambria Christensen and I don't think this is a good idea. I've seen it in in school and I'm in eighth grade. I'm thirteen. It's not great.
I'll ask one more time before we move on to the virtual individuals. Anybody else this evening? So virtually, if you would like to speak to counsel on this agenda item, please raise your virtual hand or star nine by phone and you will be recognized by our clerk and unmuted. Anybody virtually this evening would like to provide public comment? I do not see any hands up or do I see any star nines on phone? Stephanie, do you?
I do not.
Very good. With that, seeing no one else in house or virtually, I will go ahead and close this public hearing at seven oh one. And as was stated, there's no action this evening. And uh counsel, do you have any further questions of Eric that was not previously provided? Any staff report this evening? Please put your card up and I will recognize you. Start with Councilmember Bloom.
My question is was, is not of Eric. He's answered the question. My question is for the police. Um, in reviewing the statistics that were presented, how many of the calls for service that were listed for the pot shop were actually uh would result in an arrest and a you you need that list.
I've got the list here.
How many, how many?
You want the ones that West Richland assisted with or the?
Just the description of them would likely cause an arrest of an individual. Likely, I mean, just hypothetically, over half.
Let me count them real quick.
Okay.
About ten or eleven.
Ten or eleven. And and for that, it would mean they would have to be transported to county jail. And basically that would eat up at least half a shift. Is that correct?
Uh, probably not half a shift, maybe, maybe an hour or two. Depends on what the crime was.
Okay. Now, if you look at the list for yolks, where we have you have the yolks list, how many, how many do felonies or arrests do you see in that list? I type.
Six or seven.
Six or seven. Okay. If you look at the the other one, which is for the seven eleven or or whatever the sun marked. Convenience store, what?
Seven.
Okay. Now, we practice as I believe our police department practices community policing, correct?
Correct.
And so you do not police the cannabis store. You do not, you only go on calls, correct, if they're called.
Correct. We only go to the cannabis store if it's uh Benton County and assist.
An assist, okay. Now, if you look at the list for yolks, those contacts are not necessarily calls. Is that, those are more community policing activity? If I look at the citizen contacts and things of that nature.
I've got one field contact here on the yolks.
Okay. Uh, so so I guess the the question I I see is if uh we had a cannabis store, it would be policed differently than the current cannabis store because Benton County doesn't have, they don't do community policing, do they? They don't have the staff.
They do some community oriented policing, but they don't patrol the cannabis store probably as much as we would patrol ours.
Correct. So so the cannabis store would be an additional drain on our police forces. Is that, is that not a reasonable statement?
It would be another business for us to patrol, correct?
Thank you.
Anyone else this evening?
Have some comments. And I first want to comment and say that uh it's impressive that um our citizens have come out and give input. Uh, I'm sure all of us uh very much appreciate that. Um, I will say upfront that I too am extremely disappointed that this didn't get stopped with our planning commission. I listened to those meetings and it's hard for me to believe that that commission is doing its job. At least three of the four. Um, and I will have words about that with counsel in the future because uh we need to ensure that people that serve on these boards are there for the right reason. And uh there there's just no, no excuse for this to have gotten as far as it is. I will, uh Eric may want to comment, but uh some of you mentioned like, why are we wasting so much time on this? I believe that um it's a procedural issue. Um, a business owner came and asked and paid for an investigation into changing an ordinance. I believe our procedures require us to follow through with that. We have followed this procedure. It requires planning commission, public hearings and so forth. It could have been stopped there, but it wasn't. And so now we get to vote on it. In some respects, I'm kind of glad we do. Um, I'm also very glad that we hear uh the public outcry, which is obvious and overwhelming against it. Um, but I would say that it'll be one of my questions to counsel in the future as to how we can keep this from happening again. I mean, I don't want to discriminate against any particular business, but this is ridiculous and there would be nothing to stop this from happening next year. As far as I know, uh with where our ordinances are currently set up. So I would encourage some of you to um maybe follow up on this. I mean, it's great that you're here tonight, but you know, the council is very busy with city's business. And if there's not pressure from the community to implement uh not continued pressure from the community to implement change in our system, uh we may be facing this again and I don't want to do that. And I don't think anybody here wants to do that, um whether you're for or against it. Uh, this is just a lot of time. Um, I would also say that um I I I can't believe the thoroughness and the the intelligence behind the comments in the letters that we received and the comments here tonight. It's very impressive. Uh, when we see somebody rarely come up and support this issue, sometimes I've been thinking they they might smoke too much of their own product. Um, that's it's sad. Uh, so this is an obvious uh overwhelming um request by our community. Uh, I would um be shocked and will take appropriate um notice of any council member that violates our community vision and votes for this. I I that's not going to make friends for me. So I'm I'm not threatening, but I'm just saying that this seems obvious to me. And and I want you to know that. Um, I want to bring up a couple of the points. There were twenty-one uh comments this this evening and I'm sorry I didn't count. And I'm sorry I didn't count how many emails we got. There were a few more people that we didn't show up here tonight. Um, I want to say that there are a couple of other things that we heard. We heard everything from the impact of light pollution to gravel being thrown on the road. Uh, we we heard that uh the future zoning changes are a possibility, uh just because we if we if we were to prove this and only expect to get one shop, uh we have the opportunity to change zones uh in this community with the Growth Management Act every year. Um, it's happened and it could happen again. So it's absolutely correct that letting one shop in could be opening the gateway for uh several more in the future. I think we have a huge advantage in West Richland for being a community that does not have or endorse pot shops. It's huge. We've heard from many people and I've heard from many people outside of this meeting that that's why they're here, you know? I mean, they're here for the family values and so forth. Uh, we hear that loud and clear. I hope that we vote with that in a in accord with that. I would say that uh I already mentioned that we need to find a way to prevent this from happening again. I don't know if that's possible or not. That's a complicated issue and um but we'll we'll give it a go. I would also mention that it's a federal unscheduled substance and that most of the or good quantity of the rooftops in this community are employed by federal um contractors. Uh, it is absolutely nonsense to support uh a business like this with um with that kind of consistency. Uh, uh, that just boggles my mind. It boggles my mind that any business owner with any sense would try. But um that's and that's I'll state make that statement. I mentioned that there was some note about health effects. And I studied this bit with the help of some of those in the audience. You know, there are a lot of studies on marijuana impact that stopped around nineteen ninety, mid nineties. What they were finding is that there are genetic effects from smoking marijuana. Uh marijuana um has been studied by, for example, the Glennon College in Toronto, Ontario. Uh, they concluded that cannabinoids uh suppress macromolecular synthesis, that's DNA, RNA and protein generation. Uh, that they reduce the level of histone general expression, um which in some cases may be medically helpful, but not for a recreational drug. That's ridiculous. And then I would just also say that there have been studies that show that uh chromosomal chromosomal uh errors and um segregation uh breaks, deletions and translocations have also been studied and recorded. And you don't hear this from the general public, you know, from the general media. I mean, these things are destroying the people of our community and we just don't hear that enough. So um I mentioned to counsel a few meetings ago that we visited uh Seattle and it was terrible. Um, hadn't been there in years and there was open drug use on the streets um around Pike's Place Market. Uh, the smell of marijuana in the air was sickening. And that's the influence that we're seeing trying to infiltrate our community. And I'm here to uh to staunchly oppose it as as are most of you. So I'll I'll uh stop my comments there. I appreciate mayor and council for giving me the time to make the comments. Um, if there are, uh, I also heard, I'll just mention, I heard some people volunteer. Um, I'm not going to let that go. If you want to volunteer to help run this organization, this community that we live in, I'm sure that there are regular openings on a a number of planning commissions and park boards and and other things. You could talk to any of our directors. And if there was a strong enough desire, I bet they'd even make a new position for you. I'm I'll take that back. I just maybe. Uh, but the thing is, is that we are hungry for public input on this and so many other issues. Normally we get crickets in this chamber uh week after week, nothing. So you can actually tune in without leaving the comfort of your lazy boy chair and and listen to our meetings and actually comment. I would encourage you all to do that. Um, I think we have a excellent representative form of government here, but without the citizens input, it's difficult to navigate. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, council member. That's fine. Thank you. Uh, council member Bloom, you're back up again?
Well, I wanted to get back up on my soapbox and come back to my discussions that you have on your data of the questions or comments I made back to uh Mr. Menahal. Primarily, you do not have any cover because of the citizen survey. I will remind you all of the hundred and twenty email related responses of which ninety two were thrown out. Most of you in the audience don't know that unless you watched the video of the briefing that the council got on that survey. Someone shared their email, which meant that their survey came pre-filled to somebody else and came pre-filled to somebody else. And they went through and he used his magic. And if you go back, if you look at the notes there, I have the video link in the in the notes that basically he accepted thirty eight, thirty, twenty eight of them and threw out ninety two. I don't know which way they skewed, but that would skew the whole aspect of the question of do you support marijuana or don't you? And I don't know who the culprit was that shared the email that screwed it. I am a firm believer this is significant enough. It should be a vote of the people. I don't care how much it costs. Yes, it costs money to have a item on the election. Okay, it'll be a break even, but I, or the other way is just go straightforward. No. And, you know, there may be other ways of doing it. The other, the other question, it is obvious that this will require additional police resources. This is a pot shop is not a a a convenience store or uh yolks. So, thank you.
Anyone else from council this evening? Any comments, questions? Seeing none. Uh, we do not have any unfinished business this evening, nor do we have any new business. So this brings us to our final opportunity for citizen public comment. If you would like to address counsel, uh, then you could come to the podium and state your name and address and have three more minutes. Anyone else?
Dan Ritchie, bottom weight Austin grounded, bikes for types is at our bill waiting, December first Friday, uh most kickoff at eight thirty with five racing. I encourage you all to be there. I encourage you all to bring on your friends and bring your checkbook. Please be gracious. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? And if you would like to make comment by way of virtual, please raise your virtual hand or star nine if you're by phone. I see no one virtually. Stephanie, do you?
I do not see anyone. No.
So we'll go ahead and move on to staff and council comments and or reports. Staff, do you have anything for me this evening? Or for the council? I'll start with uh Roscoe Slate.
For those of those that haven't seen the social media, uh, the signal is scheduled to be operational sometime on Thursday. Uh, the cabinets, signal heads and the poles have been uh installed. Uh, the wiring today and tomorrow, the engineers will be out there running programming, testing and cross your fingers everything goes good. We'll get that open and get uh traffic back to normal. So Thursday is the day.
Thank you, Roscoe. Appreciate that update. Any other staff members? Counsel? Oh, you got, okay, sorry.
I know it says Chief Grego, but.
Long distance relationship there, right?
Okay, yeah, I'd just like to clarify and apologize to the council because I misread um the statistics on the numbers. There was a separate column for field contacts and community contacts up at the grocery store. So there's actually fifty eight community contacts, eleven contacts of field and fifteen extra patrols to go along with that total of a hundred and forty two, but there were also um more arrestable offenses than what I originally had said. So eleven for theft or shoplifting, um some disturbances and um zero actual arrests. So.
Thank you for clarification. Appreciate that, commander.
You bet. And I just wanted to say thanks to the council members and everybody that helped participate with the haunted house. It was a big success. We had probably two or three hundred people there. Uh, so it was great. And Veterans Day Parade is the Saturday.
Thank you. Moving on to council, let's see council member Bloom. You've got your card up this evening?
Don't panic, but bus route one ten is being canceled. What? Bus route one ten is being canceled.
What route is one ten?
One ten is the route that runs through West Richland and goes up and but it is being replaced. It's being replaced with ten. And this will come about when the new Queens Gate Transit Center opens. It's almost complete. This is in the current service plan update. So the, what the good news is, it will now be running every half hour rather than every hour. And hopefully it'll flex around a little bit and it'll connect to Queens Gate, which would give you better access to multiple other areas in instead. So and also you always have, although while I have a a platform, there is something called VIA, which means they'll come get you at your house and take you to the bus. So sign up for the VIA app. It's called the connect. If you're over sixty five, it's free. Um, if you're under eighteen, it's free. You can be free of taking your kids places. They can go. So just to make the pitch.
Thanks for the update. Appreciate that. Uh, council member Fettle?
Thank you. Mr. Bloom, what's the cost of the of the missing middle that you missed there?
It's going to be going down. Um, it's currently a buck fifty, but uh you can get a monthly pass for twenty five bucks.
Perfect. Thank you. Um, okay, so uh got a fantastic tour of Hanford today.
But veterans will be free.
Actually, that's that's a good interruption. That's good to know. Um, so Roscoe and I, and I think many people up on this side has got a got the same tour, fantastically what they're doing out there, what our tax dollars are going to to use and showing the actual progression of the cleanup. Uh, two weeks ago was State of Cities. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You're for sure were the the life of the party. Um, there was a couple of the mayors that I don't know that I think the first, the first time they read their speech was at the the event. Uh, but great to hear what our sister cities are doing in in their cities and what they've got going on. And then last week was Visit Tri-Cities Annual Meeting. And if you haven't heard yet, Ironman is coming to the Tri-Cities next September twenty fourth, September twenty second. A part of the leg, the big part of the leg will come through the city of West Richland. So uh twenty five hundred athletes, figure three to five uh assist people plus spectators. There'll be more than ten thousand people in the Tri-Cities from about September eighteenth through September twenty fourth. So you won't be able to go to restaurants. You won't be able to go to stores. So um but they're gonna be coming through. The bike leg is going to come through West Richland. See that go online, see the map, but it's a big deal for our city to get the Ironman. Uh, hats off to the the people of Visit Tri-Cities. They've done a great job attracting people in, but uh there's they're estimating several million dollars bringing coming into the community because of this event. Um, so it's mostly Van Geest in for us. So if you want to watch those cyclists come through, world class athletes, you know, going down Van Geest on their bicycles in excess of forty miles an hour um next September twenty second. I think that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Council member Moran?
Thank you very much. Uh, first, I would just like to say that we have a Benton Franklin Council of Governments meeting on the seventeenth of this month. It is hybrid, so you can attend in person or online. Um, and since May is likely going to be talking about the Veterans Day Parade, I will first mention that there are still thirty something minutes left. So if you have not voted, I encourage everyone to uh exercise their power to vote, please. No matter how you vote, please vote. I would like to say thank you to all of you that are here in person and online. It is, I can't begin to tell you how amazing it is to hear the Pledge of Allegiance by so many people here in these chambers when normally it's just the folks up here and the folks and staff. So thank you very much for being here. I can assure you, we all have listened. Um, I would also like to encourage you, just as council member Smart, to please volunteer and continue to volunteer for things because we need your help. We can't power the city on our own. We need your volunteer help. So please, I, we all would appreciate that. On a separate note, I would like to give a huge kudos to Commander Kelly and the police department because I know that uh we only have, what, three dog runs? Right? And uh sometimes that's not enough. And I know that our animal control officer has been doing amazing work reaching out to get fosters for the dogs that are unable to be reclaimed for whatever reason. So um I would just like to extend the huge kudos to the police department for that. Thank you for what you're doing for our animals here and I hope that we can continue to do as much as we can. Thank you. Please extend the thanks to all of the department.
I will. Thank you.
Council member Hayes?
Thank you, mayor. Um, I want to give a shout out to the West Richland Police Department for the house. If you weren't able to make it, it was quite exciting. Um, I got to dress up and live be in a coffin for four hours. So that was pretty exciting for me. And um and I did have some good makeup on and my hair done to the point that and the fake blood on me. So it was um nobody knew who I was, which was kind of exciting. When I first walked in, they thought, who is that? But um it was amazing uh the number of people that came through and and the service that the police do for this community and just involving the kids. It was just really a very fun night and very well put together and run. And it was an honor to lay in the coffin, I guess. And um and then, of course, the Veterans Day Parade uh is near and dear to my heart. I've been part of that for twenty three years now. This is the twenty third year. And it's amazing how this community comes together and honors our veterans. Um, and how many different veteran monuments we have and all the stuff going on. So I encourage everybody to come out, honor the veterans, cheer for the veterans and let them know how much they mean to us and what they've done for well, our whole region in this in everything. There is, they're just amazing people. And um so encourage you all to come out. It's going to be a good parade and um lots of fun. So bring the kids. There's lots of candy always which they love. So thank you and everybody that it came tonight and voiced their opinions. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Council member Hayes? Mayor Pro Tim Brink?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, good evening to everyone. I just want to echo what's been said earlier that it is really uh refreshing to see, I think, twenty eight individuals here in person tonight, another five or six individuals online. Uh, and the uh ability of citizens to go through this meeting and express how they feel is is very important to this council. So I thank you all for taking your time. But it's myself and then the mayor. We're the last ones between getting out of here. So I'll keep my comments short. Um, I did participate in the State of the Cities and the Visit Tri-Cities luncheons that were held earlier last month. Um, and also I participated in the Governor's Forensic Investigations Council uh where we consult with the governor on matters dealing with criminal investigative concerns. Uh, more importance though uh is uh I will be stepping aside as the District Two representative for the Association of Washington Cities uh next year as I move into the vice president role. So I encourage my fellow council members, since you are all in District Two, to consider putting in for that position to represent us on the Association of Washington Cities. And then finally, the Veterans Day Parade, I will be in it. Uh, we have several veterans that serve on council here, and I'm sure we have several veterans in the audience. I encourage all of you to come out there and I look forward to seeing you at the parade. Thank you.
Thank you, councilor, uh Mayor Pro Tim Brink. Appreciate that. And uh while I've got the the attention of the House, I want to share a little bit about an honor that I had uh this last, this last few weeks or a couple of weeks ago. Uh, Energy Communities Alliance is uh ECA. I'm the chair of ECA and uh I want to thank uh council member Smart for taking the the gavel when Mayor Pro Tim and I were not be able to uh to attend this meeting. Council member Smart for taking the the gavel when Mayor Pro Tim and I were not be able to uh to attend this meeting. But uh I was in Vienna. I was appointed by the United States Government to be one of three individuals to represent? Uh, the United States for a conference in regards to deep geological repository for spent nuclear fuel. Uh, we have formed a coalition with the Canadian Group and the European Group? That does the same thing that Energy Community Alliance does? And we have become recognized worldwide for our efforts. Uh, we met with the General of IAEA, which is the in an international atomic energy administration. Uh, he expressed his uh interest in having this? Uh, global partnership participate in future nuclear summits? Which is a very, very big thing to be recognized to uh have the communities, have the citizens, have the? The people that are involved in uh the the new nuclear industry that we have coming? The challenges that we have with spent nuclear fuel and what are we going to do about that? We also had the opportunity to meet with the United States Ambassador of Vienna and IAEA? And she too is very supportive of our 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 uh international group becoming uh part of the conversation, not just? Uh, politicians from big government? But the citizens and the communities that have these industries and these challenges in front of them. So I was very honored to have that opportunity. I just thought I'd share that with everybody while we were here. So we had a great conference. And that that dime was paid for by the US government. It was not taxpayer dollars just for your FYI, so? Other taxpayer dollars. Yes. Well, you might have had a little bit of a, but not 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 City of West Richland taxpayer dollar. All right. So with that, I thank everybody for participating this evening. Much appreciated. And with that, we will go ahead and adjourn our city council meeting at seven thirty-one. Thank you very much.